Okay, we're coming back from our break and we have our 6.5, 10:30 a.m. presentation on progress of the countywide wildland fire fuels crew program by the Northshore Fire Protection District. You want to come on up? Wherever you would like.
Do you guys have the... Come up here now.
We should.
Thank you for letting me speak here. Oh, is this for me? This is a... It doesn't seem like I was here that long ago, throwing a concept in front of you. Huh?
Who are you?
Who are you?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Mike Seansio, the Fire Chief with Northshore Fire. And I'm here to give you that update on the crew. Like I said, it seems like I was just here, throwing a concept out in front of you. And since then, it's been a whirlwind, I have to say. I'm gonna apologize, but not really. My intention was to have the crew and the equipment here out front as kind of a show-and-tell this morning, but they're a little bit busy working throughout the county today. So, felt that was more important. We're still opening roads for the Roads Department in various locations across the county and So, as you remember, about nine months ago, we had this concept and we got started. And it took me... It didn't take me very long to realize that I had a big job on my hand. We hired the first set of crew members on June 1st. We were a month behind my estimated time of getting them started. And one of the first projects we did was at the old Nice Community Center, totally overgrown, owned by the county, but totally overgrown with vegetation. But it was a good place to start the crew and to get them used to the equipment. What we did was, we hired 10 fuel technicians and one crew captain. So, 11 personnel, full-time employees, benefits, and retirement. Today, we're still full. It took us a little bit to get up to full staff of 11, but I think by August 1st, we were... We were full. And we continue to get applications as we speak. I'm actually surprised I get as many as I do. So, this was our first job there. These are just some pictures. You can see them working. Obviously, we were going into summer, so they're in their yellows, just in case fire breaks out, dry vegetation, things like that. The crew has worked throughout the county. We started partnering with individuals like the County Park System. They had a lot of need for our resources, and it was a good area to start learning how they could work together. And learning how to work together, how to use the equipment, chainsaws and everything going like that. We also worked with... Worked at some of the county cemeteries in town, or in the county. And we've also done some private work that thought it was a good idea. We also... We've been up Clerk, Clear Lake Environmental Research Center, gave us some starting jobs. One of the first ones was up on Cobb Fox Drive. I think we're still on track to go back up there, to utilize the saws and get some good saw work in. This crew, as you can see, is outfitted in full-fire gear. They are firefighter-trained. They are prepared to go to fires... To go to fires and help with the mop-up and cleanup. And this particular fire was on just after the 4th of July down in the Clear Lake area. I think it was this weekend after, and they helped with the mop-up. What it does, and what I pitched with this crew, was we can relieve a couple of engine crews and get them back in the station. Well, with 11 people, you can virtually get rid of three engines, three or four engines. So, we're able to do some of that work, that cleanup work, they were down there. There's a list of some of the fires that they went on this summer. I think we did nine fire responses, and we're still working on getting hooked up with CAL Fire and also the US Forest Service to try to get MOU agreements together so that we can respond through their agencies also. There was one incident, I was not here for it, I was out of town, but there was one incident that was not... That was a response from the crew. Well, now, there's been three. But the first one that the crew responded to that was not a fire, was a vehicle accident out towards Saratoga Springs, involved a big rig and a vehicle, had a fatality involved, had a major injury involved. The crew was called out to create a path to the vehicle so that that person could be extricated out of there. And then also, half the crew went there to cut a trail into the vehicle, and the other half went to land the helicopter. So, they're not only responding to fires, they're responding as a fire agency that whatever they can do. If they have the equipment, they're going. Just as you probably know, they... We assisted county roads in the January storm, and again, now they're out again today with all the snow and stuff we're going, that's going on. So, they've been to a lot. Here's some storm cleanup from the January. This is just a picture of the cleanup that we did in January at Kelseyville, working with county roads down there also. And what's happening with the county roads is they basically are giving us a priority of what roads they need open, and then we're... If we can do it, we're going and doing those priority ones first. As I said, we were able to employ 11 full-time fuel technicians, one of those being a captain. That was made possible by the Habemotol Tribe. They thought so much of this project, and they were one of the first ones that I talked with, with Supervisor Crandall. And it wasn't a week later, after that initial conversation about concept, that they were on board. And they stood up, the secured wages and benefits and retirement for one year. And I'm very thankful for that. We're still working on that money, and I'm very appreciative of that help from Habemotol. Shortly after that is when I came to the county and asked, you know, of the concept to come for the rest of the funding that needed to start the crew. We've had a... Our partnership with the county and Northshore Fire, it's been extremely good, and I'm hoping that we can follow that into the future years. I know that it's been helpful. I believe that, you know, we need to do... There's a lot of work to do, and I'm a little overwhelmed with all the work, but we're doing what we can. The Northshore Fire Crew has proven success in their short time, it's only been eight months, and yeah. The Clear Lake... So, what's coming? Clear Lake Environmental Research has been a huge help also. We partnered with as many people as we could, the county, Habemotol. I'm working with partnerships with PG&E, we're still working on that one. We're getting some traction, though. You know, individual ownership, people have said, "Yeah, this is a good thing." So, I'm working on all of those extra partnerships because I don't believe that there is any one entity is gonna help this problem. We're gonna have to partner together to get where we need to go as far as fuel reduction work being done. The Clear Lake Environmental Research Center has been our grant writer and administrator. We have done the remaining work. We've got a little piece left to do, but we have been on Bottle Rock Road for them. South Lake County Fire District got a grant to expand the evacuation route on 29 from Holfacker up to the county line. We're doing that work. So... And then Clerk also wrote a grant for $10 million to try to sustain the crew for five years. We were supposed to hear about that in December, but we have not heard. That was a federal grant. And Clerk is working on a grant now through CAL Fire that is a $5 million grant with about $2 something, almost $3 million going to the crew between work and equipment. One thing that I've learned, a couple of things that I've learned actually, one is grants are slow. So, unfortunately, wages don't wait for grants. And the second is, is that I may have underestimated how much of my work was... Needs to be done and how much focus from myself. So, that's okay. Those are learning... Those are learning processes you have to go through. So, if we get sustained, maybe we'll figure something else out in the future. Our partnership with Clear Lake has been proven to be beneficial, but it's a slow process, as I said. As I said, I'm working with PG&E on a MOU, but it has been truly a hard sell. And securing opportunities and partnerships is what I'm focused on into the future for this crew. Remember that, you know, one thing that I did say is, I promised my board, and I do have a few of them here today, that the Northshore Fire Protection District, none of the money goes towards the fuels crew. It's all supported by grants. They don't have the... We don't have the funding to do the 911 response, if you will, and the fuels crew. So, I'm strictly on grants and outside work as I can get it. And there's your crew. They are the Hogback Ridge Crew. For those of you that are not familiar, Hogback Ridge is the ridge that runs across the top of Highway 20. Brian Barco, the captain for the crew, thought that was appropriate for the name, and at first, I was a little, "I don't know," but it's growing on me very well. And they do a great job. I do know we're losing a few members to the US Forest Service, which I'm not upset about. I'm saddened they're leaving, but we are... We got them their start, and they're gonna go on to their fire careers. And that's what we're about, and I'll be... I'll work on replacing them all and keeping this crew fully staffed as much as I can. And with that, end of report.
Chief Seansio, your innovation with this whole program, you saw this need. We've been working together for years with the Risk Reduction Authority, bringing together the partners. And this collaboration with the tribe, with Habemotol and Northshore Fire and the county and all these other groups coming together, this is... This is incredible. And I just want you to know how very grateful I am, because this was a crazy idea you had, and you just ran with it. And you brought everybody together, and everybody's been supportive because of this need, and I'm just incredibly grateful for you. And, you know, this... We've been talking for years about the capacity, the capacity, the capacity. And this is... This is a huge success story on filling that need. And anything that we can do to keep this going... I know Supervisor Simon and I have contributed big chunks of our cannabis revenue, and we will continue to do that. If there's a need to fill the gaps between the grants, I mean, I'm not gonna speak for you, but I will definitely make my funds available to you. I know he's already put in a big, big chunk. So, I really appreciate this. We did have the letters this morning on our consent agenda for the Clerk grants to try and help you in any way that we can. The Risk Reduction Authority, I know you were out running around yesterday, so you missed the meeting, but we got those letters of support signed yesterday, too. So, just huge, huge thanks to you, and also for Habemotol and for the tribe. This is a big, big, big collaboration, and I just... I can't be prouder to be a part of all of this. Supervisor Crandall?
Thank you. Yes, and I will commit with you. So, just in case we need to fill something or whatever, it would be crazy not to, considering Hogback Ridge is in my district and just named after that. But no, just in concept, meeting with you and Chairwoman Treppa, it was just... It seemed a concept, you know, and I've been working with enough people to where concepts come up, and we never get to the finite, you know, the finite fruition of things, and this is great to see and appreciate the contribution from the tribe. So, Sherry, thank you for that. And again, you coming up with this idea, you know, like just, "We need to do something about this," and man, you came right to the table. I've witnessed these, you know, the Hogback Ridge Crew working on many occasions. I watched the control burn in Spring Valley during those fires that we had during the summer spot fires or whatever the case may be that are out there. One time, we had three fires in one day, a couple of years back. This would give your actual crews that are, you know, on the fire, not the fire crew, but the actual firemen, or to have the chance to go to the next fire in case of that, and these gentlemen can be the reserve backups. And I was just talking to, you know, the Chief Sepeda about it. And so, I think it's just, it's very important. I do also like they... This crew also cut some grass in the lake in certain areas like that. I remember in the harbor, they did so, and then also in that creek. So, I mean, they're just clearing, doing many things for the county, and I know there's other areas outside of my district, I'm just highlighting that. But yeah, good work. I appreciate going out to that control burn and seeing a couple of kids. They're like, "Hey, aren't you?" So, I was like, "Wait, I know who you are. You went to school with Mike..." You know, so that's awesome to see. And so, recruitment, this gives the chance with these gentlemen going into forestry. Now, there's other, you know, youth or, you know, graduates that may come out and say, "Hey, I wanna do this," and hopefully, they stick with it. Gives you all the option to hire folks in the county to stay in this type of field and provide a service that can keep us safe.
Supervisor Spatier?
I don't think I'm gonna say anything that hasn't already been said, but the job opportunities, obviously, the mitigation opportunities, all of the above, we need more of it, not less of it. So, I think we need to figure out how to put our heads together and make this a sustainable program, if not even growing the program, since there's a whole lot more out there to be done than just what's already been done. So, thank you very much for approaching us with this concept. Happy that we supported the concept and that others have supported the concept. Let's make sure that this becomes sustainable. To me, it's a similar conversation than what we just had earlier about the Road Map Task Force. It's important, but it's important that it continues, more so than anything else. So, thank you so much.
Are you sure, Simon?
Yeah, obviously, in complete support of the program. Was able to witness during fire cleanup, fire, you know, responses. Also, with the cemeteries, helped with two cemeteries, Pioneer Cemetery in Lower Lake and also down at the Middletown Cemetery, some stuff that, since I've been on the board, haven't been able to find an answer to of how we help, you know, mitigate these issues that have caused so much damage during the fire. So, Jessica, you're not speaking for me, I said last time, 100% support this program. I think, remembering the number, was it $100,000? So, obviously, committing that again for this year to move forward with that, and obviously, making this a sustainable program is so important. We set up here all the time, being requested by phone calls or something, and we run into, "Well, we don't have enough folks..." This is a crew that can go out and do that dramatic work that needs to be done, whether it's just vegetation abatement. There's a big conversation about what needs to be done in all the streams and creeks in Lake County that need to be cleaned out. These are opportunities as we continue to grow to really make some significant impacts in all of our communities. And obviously, take that to heart. So, don't have an easy way. I think, what is the overall budget? I see 521 in here, was it about $800,000 a year?
It's a guesstimate, because we bought all the equipment, you know, it's gonna be around $850, I think, for a year worth. And so, you know, I had a meeting with the County Auditor's Office last week about it, and it's basically a budget to... Month-to-month budget. I don't have to... But unfortunately, for me, it's scary to not have secured funding going forward and all those. I don't wanna lay 'em off. I don't wanna get rid of those jobs. So, you know, I'm looking for as much as I can, and that's why I'm reaching out to, you know, PG&E and things like that. We can sustain things. There's an opportunity there, we'll see. But I am working diligently with people within PG&E to get that done. And I'm hopeful that it will, so...
Well, my question on that is getting us to that point, you know? This year, we need to, as you said, keep this program going. Last year, we did a lot of different things. I know, I wanna just start throwing out where I think we could help some more. My discretionary funds is something, you know, can already commit, but I'd like to challenge the board to figure out how we get this, that gap funding this year. We're all working together in partnership to do that, but I really wanna see it going because the second year's work, obviously, just like our task force we just talked about is gonna be the most important thing. We've seen a lot of benefits, but I think this year, with the guys knowing the land, getting them on the crew, even though we're replacing some of the three, understanding... Because you see it when you drive around, man, that really needs to be taken care of. Somebody needs to step up and do that, and I think that's important. So, I'm putting it out there, to challenge the CAO to bring something back with the administration and financial officers, you know, that we could have a deeper conversation on that during budget time. But I'd really like to, or even sooner, to solidify that because work can start here in the next... It can start now, as they're doing, so anyway.
Yeah, I've also had conversations with county partners, different departments. Large Union and I are gonna sit down and discuss, can I just do all of his vegetation management work? And that'll free his employees up to do other work, things like that. It's in its infancy right now, but, you know, that partnership could be there also. Maybe something could be made with the County Roads Department for that type of work also. I don't know. Was, you know, more to come, but we're all... I'm working on all of those just to see where we can keep the crew busy.
One thing, just wanna expand, too. What you talked about was private landowner opportunities or businesses to get out there and to really have this paid crew. As you all know, here in Lake County, we used to use the con crews to do a lot of this work. Really like the opportunity that this Hogback Ridge Crew puts together for individuals who need that work to be done on their properties that have the funds to do that and are always asking us. I imagine we all get calls like that all the time, and having a crew say, "All right, I do have someone, maybe we can have the conversation with to look at doing those projects." So, I know it's challenging. You might have to use like the neighbors helping neighbor form that we do for the South Lake Fire Protection District and other stuff like that, but I wanna keep enhancing.
We're a little more expensive than the CAL Fire Crew.
I know you're more expensive than that, and I understand that. Yeah, I understand that. But, you know, once those rates are set up, that gives an opportunity because, you know, just a whole other aspect of it because there's so much...
But we are gonna be less than third-party vendors also.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, I wasn't typing pricing. Just somewhere to go.
Well, that's shocking to...
Hey, you pay for convenience, right? You don't have a crew that needs to do it on a 50-acre parcel. I've got some problems, you know, spending $50,000 or $20,000 or $10,000 compared to a property completely burning down, rebuilding, dealing with insurance. Those are the things we're talking about, and we've all been through it throughout the entire county. So, as you can tell, I'm passionate about it, wanna be able to make sure we can find these things because we'll continue that partnership. And we, you know, all talk from the Middletown REIT standpoint, you know, we needed to set up an MOU to use our chipper that we had. It very quickly got done, so didn't have to move it from county to county, so... Or from one end of the county to the other. I appreciate your crew, all the work they did, but, you know, it's partnerships. We can't do it alone as a county, can't do it alone as Northshore. Everybody's gotta chip in. And Sherry, thank you very much for what your tribe has done. You're always a leader in the county, so thank you very much.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. First thing I heard, hey, we have Hogback Ridge Crew clearing Scotts Valley Road during this recent storm. I very much appreciate that. And I share the enthusiasm of my colleagues here on the board. I'm trying to figure out where we might be able to move forward. I think you're right to be concerned. We got a want and done, and I got bills to pay. But a lot of what you highlighted here wouldn't necessarily fall under the wildfire defense umbrella if I were seeking grant funds or something like that, storm cleanup or something like that. So, as we look for other buckets of money with Clerk and other partners, I assume probably there's interest in stumbling toward an MOU of some sort with the county or with the Risk Reduction Authority or something to continue doing this. But I see two main things to keep a year-round crew going. It may not all be all wildfire defense all the time, and if we can better identify what grants we're going for, then we can have a better discussion on what potential cost share the county or Risk Reduction Authority or somebody else might have to bear to keep you going. So, and I understand this has been a big burden on you, so... And Clerk's not here, and we don't wanna like put anyone on the spot about next steps, but I do see two main thrusts here, and one is the ability to get like, you know, guys in the yellow suits there for fire cleanup and all that. That's right on point with the grant money. The other responses are also very important, and we would love to see that continue, but doesn't necessarily create an eligibility for grant funding. And even if it did, with all those grants out there, again, who can write the grants? Who can administer the grants? Who can come back and ask us for cost of share or stuff like that? So, I don't really have an idea on that. I wanna share, I kinda wanna challenge people to do that, what the next steps might be. But I'm not seeing here necessarily that you've identified, you know? Do you, for example, the stuff you're doing with our Roads Crew, is that something we should be stumbling toward an MOU toward, or is that just kind of a mutual aid thing? I don't really know how to put my head around that.
So, the work that my crews are doing today, yesterday, and I'll talk specifically about Scotts Valley Road. Scotts Valley Road was a disaster on Friday. It had utility power, utility lines down, power lines down, trees across the road. And we don't have, because the grants are so slow, there's not a lot of projects like shovel-ready to go. So, we're kinda waiting on some of those. But during these storms and these emergencies, we still have to get emergency vehicles in and out. We still have to get PG&E in and out because PG&E, they may try to cut their way through, but they call in a crew to come do that work. So, I've been collaborating with everyone. On Friday, we started work on Scotts Valley Road. We had about a mile of power lines down on the road that we will not go near until they're proven safe by PG&E. Within an hour, I had PG&E there saying, "The lines are down." We all knew they were dead, but the lines are down, they got them out of the way, we did the work. And got Scotts Valley Road cleaned up from 11th all the way to Highway 20. On Sunday morning, we had a structure fire in my part of the district on Scotts Valley Road past where the crews started. That could've been a different outcome had my crews not went in there, cut the road open, cleared the road so that we could get emergency vehicles through. And I'm thankful that we do that. I'm committed to that. I'm sitting in the EOC, the county EOC today, pushing that crew to roads that are still blocked. I have a list of them. And, you know, I feel it's important, we gotta get those roads open so that our emergency vehicles can get through. I don't care what district. And also, that PG can get there and get their work done a lot quicker. So, I'm bearing that. We're bearing that on year one of the grant money that was donated, you know, from Habemotol and the county, but I feel that that's the right thing to do right now, because we're in a state of local emergency.
Yeah. And just so that my colleagues are aware, we are having conversations with Public Works, and we do have some other opportunities. It's just not really... We can't really share with all that right now. But I'm so appreciative that you can reprioritize during an emergency. The Clerk grants are for CWPB projects, so it is funding that's going to be keeping the fuels crew going for years, but there is that gap. So, the grants are due this month. They'll likely be awarded mid-summer, funded sometime next fall. So, there is going to be that period of time that we have to figure out how to cover to keep your crews working all through the spring and summer and fall. I'm really feeling confident about those grants, but of course, nothing is ever a done deal. So, we do have this time right now in the next couple of months to get our strategy together to support, make sure that you all are not missing a beat, and you don't have to let anybody go, and hopefully, you can hire more.
Yeah. Supervisor Green, just to answer one other question, the partnership we've done with county parks. Some of those parks were well, way overgrown, and they needed some work. You know, we've had homeless fires in some of those parks because the vegetation was too much, and that's what Supervisor Crandall alluded to. We went in there and cleaned them up, raised all the branches up, raised all the trees up so that we don't have that problem. So, yes, it's not really fuel reduction work, but it is in a sense with the constituents going into those areas. And we've cleaned up parks around the county, I think, and just done a lot of... A lot of that work is raising everything up. Under the watchful eye of the Superintendent Brian and... Brian and, and Lars, but, uh, they're super supportive of us continuing.
Any, uh, Supervisor Spatier?
So there is one thing that I forgot to mention and, and I don't believe that we, uh, participated in putting in a letter of support for the $10 million grant that you haven't heard back from, I don't think. Um, and today we do have a, a letter in front of us or two letters, uh, in front of us to support. I, I just hope that let's not miss another grant opportunity without getting the board's support. Or if the timeline is short, individual board members can easily supply letters of support and anything that we can add on to your packet to make the points just grow as, as high as possible so that you could be eligible to receive the grants. Uh, I would say let's not miss an opportunity like that. Obviously you've had the support of the board in the past because we want to see these things happening. Uh, so I would say reach out, uh, and, and get as many letters of support as you can, uh, because the better the packet, the better the possibility of the grant. Um, we have some possible, hopefully you get the grants, uh, but I, I definitely think that there's still a way for us to contribute. Um, I know that we've received already, uh, some funds and are receiving more funds and I'll leave it at that, that, that we have the opportunity to use however we feel. Um, and I think that we should make sure that you're part of that conversation when we bring it back to the board to, uh, to discuss how to utilize those funds that we've received. Um, so we'll make sure to reach out.
Thank you.
Uh, public input?
You have a.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me get to Director Deleon first.
Good morning, Board. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, good morning. Scott Deleon, Department of Public Works. Um, there was a quote, uh, shown on one of the slides already and, and it's been certainly noted today, uh, the work that's been done, uh, by the crew. Uh, and, and I was asked to read something. This went from one of my road foremen. Um, I was hoping that tomorrow at the Board of Supervisors meeting, you could give a huge shout out to the North Shore Fire Fuels Crew for all their help during these storm events. They have saved our rear end so much and have been so beneficial to operate, to our operation during these storms. So Chief Seansio, on behalf of our entire Department of Public Works, I'd like to personally thank you and the crew, uh, for all the work that you've done, uh, to help the county road department. Uh, again, it's been talked about, uh, quite a bit this morning and, uh, it is greatly appreciated. And, uh, you certainly helped us, uh, out immeasurably. So, uh, just again, want to personally thank you and, um, look forward to partnering with you in the future, uh, on future projects. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, now public input.
Hi, Willie Sepeda, Lake County Fire Chief. Um, you know, the, they're called a fuels crew, but they're really an all hazard. So the Techless Fire and then the Augulon Fire resulted in multiple dispatches after that. And if it wouldn't have been for Mike's crew there, um, it would have been a delayed response. This last fire season was one of the slowest we've seen for a while, but with our grass crop, we're going to see a grass crop similar to 2017 and we are limited for resources. So having that crew, like you said, for the vehicle accident, getting access to, you know, we have a lot of those vehicles over the cliff and it is amazing what his crew has done. I think every one of you, your constituents have benefited from his crew getting out there and freeing up those nine and one resources. Most of us have three or four people on and that's, like I said, that's everybody. So having them there and doing that, amazing. So I want, as Fire Chief, I just, I really am mesmerized by what you've done and, and glad to be working beside you. Thank you.
Thank you. Wait, did he give his name?
Yeah. Mesmerized. Wow. Joe Huggins, Kelseyville Fire Chief. Um, I, I just, first, I would like to applaud the board for the overwhelming support that you're giving Chief Seansio. I have eyewitness, firsthand witnessed the crew at work, uh, not only during our, uh, our winter storm things, but we were on several large incidences last summer and, um, they showed up and they went to work. Um, I'm dear personal friends with the crew captain. He's in my office a lot, uh, because when they're working in Kelseyville and it is my, my intention and I'm going to try to bridge a gap. Um, because right now, if we have an incident, large, small, whatever, the hogback crew, they're all trained firefighters. Um, they're all R T 130ed, um, which is fire line, safety, all that. Um, I would like to have them on initial dispatch. Um, to bridge a gap, because right now, if we have an incident, we have to step back and say, oh yeah, there's a hogback crew there. So if we need them, we call them. Um, but when we're, we're in the fight, I'm not thinking that. So to, to get these folks, guys and gals on the crew inserted into our response matrix, because with the reduction of Cal Fire crews, um, like Canocti camp inmate crews, it's imperative to have, um, crews like this show up on an incident. Um, so I'm going to try to bridge that gap with cooperation with Chief Seansio and Cal Fire. Um, but again, with the, and it is fuel reduction and I get it and I understand it and we absolutely need it, uh, places like Riviera West, um, one way in, one way out. Uh, the reduction of, uh, ground fuels, ladder fuels is imperative. Um, all, all through that corridor. That's just one spot in the county. That's, that's horrific. Um, if we get a fire established in, in that area, Riviera West area, you know, the chance of, of life loss is, is incredible. Um, you can't get out. There's nowhere to go. You got a mountain behind you. So the reduction of fuels is imperative. Um, but again, I'm here to, to support Chief Seansio and everything that he's doing. Uh, the crew is working out fantastically and also to applaud the Board of Supervisors for your overwhelming support for Chief Seansio. So thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thanks, Chief.
Good morning. My name's Sherry Treppa. I am the Chairwoman of Habemotol Pomo of Upper Lake. And I too would like to comment and thank the board for your, um, support of this agency as well as the crew itself. Um, to me, it's one of the most pub, most important public safety investments that we can make for our community. And, um, to not continue to support it would be, um, a, a dire problem and an ongoing, you know, challenge for the community because this is really vital, vital effort. Um, for many years, our tribe has had a great relationship with North Shore Fire Protection District stemming back to years of 2004, 2005, when we were undertaking very difficult effort to put land in trust for the purposes of building our small casino. Um, we had a lot of support from, uh, the agency and previous chiefs. Um, but just to highlight some of the commitments that we have made that, um, fortunately that we have businesses that are helping us make, um, over the years. So, um, we commit $80,000 a year since 2012 pursuant to the M O U that we concluded, uh, years ago, I believe in 2005. But upon the opening of our casino, um, we've been able to make that commitment every year. Uh, similar commitment, um, through an M O U for our executive offices and call center, uh, in the amount of $25,000 a year, um, I believe since 2018. Um, moreover, we, um, made a one-time contribution during COVID, um, when we understood that there was a real need to replace the generator for the Upper Lake, um, facility there in, in the town of Upper Lake. Um, and then significantly to the point of why we're all here today, uh, the tribe committed $630,000, uh, to hire the existing crew and I think purchase some of the equipment that you have. Um, notably, these, uh, contributions are all voluntary and I think it shows the tribe's commitment not only, um, to the Upper Lake community, but to the county in general. Um, I just want to say a couple of comments. Every day, uh, the agency's brave staff are there for our community, ready to take the risk required for rescue while others are running from the danger. These folks run into it. Um, it's these heroes that are there for some of the most difficult challenges a family, business and a tribe can have over the course of time. Like many in our community, our tribe knows firsthand the service and sacrifice of the firefighters that we have. Um, all of us will never forget the Mendocino Complex Fire in 2018, one of the largest fires that hit California over the years. Those flames came right down on our reservation boundaries and nearly wiped out, um, many of our homes as well as the town. And many of our tribal members' homes were at risk. When the danger arrived, the biggest thing standing in its way were the heroes of the North Shore Fire Protection District who were saving lives, sparing property and keeping our tribe and community safe. Your ongoing support is badly needed and, um, want to thank you for letting me say a couple of words. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chairwoman Treppa, your initial contribution to this project is what spurred all the momentum.
Good. Well, happy to hear that. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Shannon Stillwell and I'm a, a Board of Director for the North Shore Fire District. And I just wanted to first of all, thank you guys for all the support. Sure. My name is Shannon Stillwell and I'm, uh, the Board of Directors for, uh, the North Shore Fire District. And first of all, I wanted to thank you guys for your support for this program. I want to thank Mike for his leadership and having this crazy idea to start with and getting it off the ground. There was a lot of work and effort to try to get that. More importantly and most importantly was the contribution from Habemotol and all of their efforts to be able to provide for us, uh, the beginning and the, the process to get this off the ground. So a lot of hard work, a lot of contribution from the community altogether. Um, it's something that, uh, I echo what Sherry said about, we can't let it drop. If you let it drop, it's a significant step back for the county. Um, so whatever we can do to migrate maybe existing grant projects that are not assigned to the North Shore, uh, that are for fuels reduction or for public safety works and those types of avenues, um, that's going to be desperately needed. So as much as we can put on creative hats to figure out where the funding come from, I know that last year, the contribution was from some of the cannabis funds. So wherever we can do to try to see where we can actually support this, uh, ongoing would be, uh, significant. And I think it's a, a valuable project. Uh, I've also been a personal recipient of the fuels crew. I had them out to my property specifically and it's tremendous effort for them to kind of clear a property because it's unique. It's not going to a public land and being able to just do what they need to do. They have a property owner kind of like overseeing what's happening, but, uh, they're very professional. They get the job done. They work very efficiently and I'm very proud to be part of this project with Mike. So thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Shannon.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Supervisor Patrick Wright, Lakeport Fire Protection District, Chief Seansio. Um, I'm the new guy on the block and, uh, I know, uh, firsthand how much work it is to even pull one of these projects together. Uh, attempted for many years to do this at my previous, uh, position and was not successful. So, uh, for Chief Seansio, you know, congratulations and applaud your success. Want to work and be a part of the continued success. Uh, since I've been here in the, in the county only about four months now, starting tomorrow, um, the level of cooperation and communication amongst the chiefs has just been astounding and I do appreciate that. And the level of support from the supervisors in the county is just, again, also amazing. And, uh, this type of project just plays right into that, uh, between fire safe councils and R R A and the, uh, the Fire Chiefs Association and just all that goes into that. And to see this project, uh, working on the ground, it is, it is quite impressive. Um, my experience with them has been limited mainly to the two storms and they know Scotts Valley Road better than I know Scotts Valley Road because they've spent a lot of time out there for both storms trying to clear it and keep it and get it open and keep it open. And, uh, likewise, today I believe they're working in Lakeport, the city of Lakeport, helping, uh, with storm cleanup. It's been, uh, well-received. It's been appreciated and, uh, I know that, uh, we are going to attempt to do what we can to support, uh, North Shore's continuation of this project and commend the fire, uh, the, my fellow fire districts as well as the supervisors, uh, and the tribes working towards, uh, continuation of this. Not only for the, for the 11 folks that are on that crew, but to see it expanded, uh, around the county and, uh, see what opportunities can present themselves to grow and, uh, continue to building the fire safety within this, uh, within the county. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody in the Zoom room?
There are no hands in Zoom.
Okay. So I, I also want the rest of the board to know that, um, the work that you're doing on the Bottle Rock Corridor is, um, in response to our tree mortality disaster. That is one of the worst stretches of standing dead trees and they're falling down in the storms left and right. Uh, so the crew is out there clearing all the understory, which is significant so that, um, the trees can be accessed because right now you can't even get to the trees and we're talking hundreds, possibly thousands of dead trees there. So they're out there. They were swift to get to that need and also in the Fox Drive neighborhood. So as this relates to our tree mortality disaster, again, I can't thank you enough and clerk for helping manage the projects and, and writing these grants. So again, massive collaboration like I've never seen before and it's incredible and I'm excited to just keep this going, keep the momentum going, um, because we have a lot of work ahead of us. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, and just possible points of future inquiry for staff. I don't really know. First, so for example, we still have, uh, my predecessor, Tina Scott, allocated some money for brush clearing in Scotts Valley. It's a little unclear sometimes where you're at in the public right of way. You can do things when you're on private property and, and doing work. Um, you know, it's a little, it's a wobbler as to what, uh, public benefit can be, uh, given to private property owners and stuff like that. This seems like a perfect opportunity to kind of bridge that because, uh, I have a desperate need for fuel reduction along our waterways. Unfortunately, those aren't on the public right of ways for the most part. Um, so it involves, uh, you know, uh, getting rights to the property and then you have to have some confidence that we are acting in the public interest. You know, I'm hoping as this public trust doctrine involving, uh, our waterways, uh, gets a kind of, uh, expanded under a recent changes in state law, that we can explore things like public trust easements, um, that would allow us, uh, without having to haggle property owner by property owner, that we could just get into a stream course or something like that and have some confidence that we can apply money. So, uh, I saw Director Deleon earlier, so I didn't want to put him on the spot, but as far as the short-term gap funding, uh, I'd be totally open to, uh, hearing more about how we might be able to leverage, um, that prior allocation and maybe be able to contract, uh, with you either formally or informally. Um, uh, yeah, but I think having some certainty as to not just what we can do on the public lands, but what we can do on the private lands, um, will give you some of the certainty you need and some of the funding you need to continue this. Uh, and I'm just kind of throwing the idea out there that I'd like, I'd like us to explore what that prior allocation could be done, uh, in terms of keeping you busy this year. So without putting anybody on the spot or committing anyone to any specific course of action, I, I have an idea on that. So.
Oh, okay. Perfect conversation to, uh, take offline with Director Deleon and Chief Seansio. Um, the right of entries is the biggest part of the job and, you know, everyone kind of works together. We activate volunteers, fire safe councils, but the right of entries, that's the, a big piece of the job. And we don't want to burden that with our fuels crew. We want them out doing the work that needs to be done. Um, so thank you so much. I would like to take item 7.2 and I hope you can stick around for that because, um, it is, I hope all of you chiefs can stick around. If you have a couple more minutes, we'll move on to that. Um, so item 7.2.
Can I ask a question before we move on?
Yes.
Chief Seansio, before you leave.
Yep.
What is your timeline of your current, uh, budget as far as when it will expire? When, when you will run out of money? Just to figure out when we need to have that conversation because again, same thing as the roadmap task force. I feel we need to make sure we're in front of it, uh, and having those discussions coming back to the board on how we can continue to support because that's not really necessarily in today's agenda on getting into the specifics. So I'd like to get into specifics, but it's also based on what's your timeline?
So I'm projecting that we're going to be out of money by August and that might be, um, stretching it a little bit, but, um, because we got such a late start with all of the salaries and benefits not starting till June and they were actually, um, given to us earlier, um, we kind of rolled that money over and that's why we're able to push it through. But we should have enough, uh, hopefully till August, um, right now. And we continue to work on, as I said, the 29 project. That's a revenue generating, uh, job down there if we can ever get back to it. Uh, but we need help with Caltrans and things like that. There's a lot of, of coordination that's got to go on for that job. And then finishing the Bottle Rock, we're, we're done with our portion of the Bottle Rock, but we're, uh, working with clerk. our portion of the Bottle Rock, but we're working with Clerk on phase two of that to drop the trees now and then take care of them with our crew. So hopefully, we can be a part of phase two of the Bottle Rock job to help clean it up. And I'll be, hopefully with Clerk's okay, I'll be hiring the faller to drop those trees for us. So, and then we'll just work together. So August, I would say.
I would like to volunteer. We worked together during this initial, put the plan together, brought it back, with the budget back to the board for consideration. Be more than happy to do that again, to discuss this and what our next steps would be.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Perfect.
Okay.